Well, a little bit of a lag, but that's to be expected. I'm feeding you knowledge.
Jason has both times.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He's got a big campaign for Paragon Daily.
Campaign, campaign for, get Yale profanities. Is it working?
I can't hang out for two hours, actually.
Good evening.
There you go.
Good evening and welcome to this forum presenting the candidates for the Santa Monica City Council. My name is Ann Williams and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica, and I will be one of two co-moderators for this evening's forum. The second co-moderator will be Carter Rubin, who is a advisory board member for Santa Monica Next. This evening, we will be hearing from the working candidates for the Santa Monica City Council who will appear on the November 4th general election ballot. Whichever candidates are elected will serve four-year terms beginning in December of 2014. They are competing for three open seats. This evening's forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund. The League is always looking for community partners who are committed to bringing nonpartisan, level-playing failed forums to Santa Monica, so we are excited to bring this forum to you in cosponsorship with Santa Monica Next. This is a first-time collaboration, and we look forward to working together in the future on issues of mutual interest. The League and Santa Monica Next are both nonpartisan nonprofit organizations. Neither organization supports or opposes candidates for political office. Tonight's forum has been taped for replay by Los Angeles Street Squad in the back there. We are pleased that all candidates, fourteen candidates, will be here this evening. We do want to acknowledge however that I believe at this point, three of our candidates, that's Sue Himmelrich, Jennifer Kennedy, and Richard McKinnon, are at a planned commission meeting upstairs and will join us as soon as they are able. I would now like to introduce the candidates to you. Tonight, we're going to depart from our usual format and combine introductions with a lightning round to get us started. Candidates, we realize this will be an exercise in discipline, but as I call out your names, please fill up one or two words only. How did you get to tonight's forum? We'll start with Jerry Rubin.
Three words: pink, blue, boss.
Pam O'Connor.
Unfortunately, on a car-free day, I have to drive today because of work.
Oh, that's, thank you, more than two words. That's okay. Terrence Slater.
Echo Boost.
Okay, Frank Gruber.
By bike.
Phil Brock.
Automobile.
Okay, Nick Bowles.
Bar pool.
Okay. Whitney Scott Bane.
Walking.
Zoe Muntener.
Fueled by compassion.
Kevin McHugh.
Thirteen-year-old Chris.
Rich, oh, he's not here. John Mann.
Bus.
Okay. Michael Feinstein.
By bike.
Okay, well, we have a very alternative modes of transportation group here. Now I'm going to explain the format briefly. Candidates will be responding to questions submitted prior to the forum by members of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica and Santa Monica Next and Santa Monica Spoke. The format for the forum will be as follows. Round one, a moderator will ask a question that will be answered by all candidates. Round two will consist of questions posed to groups of three or two candidates at a time. During round three, each candidate will answer a different question, and for round four, each candidate will choose a question from round two or three and answer it. Time permitting, there will be another lightning round. Candidates will be asked one or two, one or more yes or no questions, which will be answered by all candidates, and finally, each candidate will have sixty seconds each for concluding statements. That will be the time to comment, rebut, augment, or clarify any topic raised during the forum. Candidates will speak in reverse order of round one. It should be noted that all questions will be asked of the candidates in random order in accordance with a matrix developed by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica. As a reminder to the candidates, we have timers in the middle row. You'll get a fifteen-second warning before your timer's actually going to put, there it is, and please finish your sentence when the timer holds up the stop sign. We ask that audience members please hold your applause until the end of the forum. That will keep the proceedings impartial and allow us to ask as many questions as possible. So, we'll start with round one. Ann, Carter, would you like to take it away?
Thanks, Ann. So this question, again, goes to each of the candidates in a randomly selected order. And if you could assist each other in getting access to the microphones we have spread around the tables, that would be great, and remember to watch out for your glasses of water as you pass it back forth. Here's the first question. Some context first. Santa Monica has managed to avoid a budget deficit through a two-pronged approach that includes cutting expenses and increasing revenues where impossible. If elected, you will have to pass the city's biennial budget in June. The question: Based on the information you know now, what expenses would you cut or how would you increase revenues in order to keep Santa Monica in the black? The first increase revenues went possible. How would you keep Santa Monica in the black? The first to answer this will be Jerry Rubin.
Well, I certainly wouldn't cut the firefighters, the police officers. I wouldn't cut things for municipal employees. If I were to start, I'd probably try to do a little bit less for consultants because we have so many talented people here, that we'd probably want to volunteer their time in expert ways, and are local here. I think that would be a good starting point to trim the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam O'Connor.
Thank you. I'm Pam O'Connor, and I've been on the city council for five terms now, and during that whole time, the city has maintained a triple-A bond rating. That's the highest rating any city can have. And the budget, and I just want to point out that the budget is available on the city's website. There's, it's a full document, full disclosure, full transparency, talks about where all the budget revenues come from. And what the city has been able to do during the downside of the economy, has been able to, through a variety of means, maintain stability, provide a high level of service, not lay people off, and to do it in a way where we were very strategic about how we were cautious about using the funds and where cuts would be made. Going forward, I think that maintaining that high level of service is important, maintaining a robust economy, and that means supporting our local businesses, and again, the whole bottom line is, we want to have a city where we have the high level of services. So I want to maintain the stability that I've brought forward.
Thank you. Terrence Slater.
Thank you very much. For a start, I'd make sure that the residents are not the taxable, finable, feeble, ticketable entities that the city finds us to be, and make sure that all of the outside three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus people that come into our city a day are the ones where the, that pay for our services and what goes on. The developers have not been leaned on enough, not for development, but the developers that already have approved projects should certainly pay more than their share for being able to come into our city. The idea that we find ourselves constantly putting bill for everyone that comes into the city as residents has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Gruber.
I've been trying to think about answering this question because as much as I respect the people asking it, I think that it doesn't really make sense to try to focus on these specific things to cut. I think the important thing is to realize that because Santa Monica has had such a great economy, that over the thirty years that we've had progressive government here, we've been able to deliver great services and social services for a resident population that more than most cities is supportive of this, that there are very few cities where taxes actually pass, where people support the building of affordable housing, things like that. And Santa Monica is one of them where it shows that good local government works and that people have trust in it. And I'll just say that I support Measure H and HH, because I think that that's a good use of tax money.
Thank you. Phil Brock.
Well, I'll start by refuting Mr. Gruber. Measure HH should be defeated.
Phil's format is you're not supposed to direct.
Okay, that's fine. So I believe Measure HH should be defeated. We should have no new tax increases in this city. We are an extremely wealthy city with a budget that's only a few million dollars less than Pasadena's each year, yet Pasadena has a hundred-and-forty-thousand people in the city. We have thirteen city attorneys alone that make over three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. We have a city manager salary that's set a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars higher than Santa Barbara's, higher than Pasadena's. We're spending way too much money on our top-level staff. Let's have some physical responsibility and let's use some common sense in our government. I've run a business for forty years. We would never tolerate this type of salaries in private business. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Bowles.
Thank you. So I've spent a lot, about three and a half years as an accounting business manager, and I know that the quickest way to get fired is to tell a rock star that he needs to stop spending money. So the first thing that I would look at is our top-five industries, which is retail, hospitality, entertainment, technology, and medical services. Working with them and collaborating to make sure that they are on top of their game. The other thing that I would do is make wise investments. Some investments would be in particular, replacing halogen with LED light bulbs to save money in the long run and increase money to the city service budget, as well as investing in infrastructure for wireless technologies so that we can compete with AT&amp;T and Verizon, which we are already doing. Finally, providing more oversight to some of these hotels who may have not been audited or any type of outline business that doesn't seem to be representing, reporting the proper business tax amounts.
Thank you. Whitney Scott Bane.
First thing I do is I have the city's share on the metro link. Second thing is I tax the developers and not the people that sell their homes. The third thing I do is increase film production by lowering the city's fees and giving the companies that come here, giving them breaks by hiring people who live in this city and bringing more production money to the local merchants, spreading it around. There you go. You get more taxes by more production that you have in the city.
Zoe Muntener.
I think that the first thing we have to do is do a general audit of the city budget and the organizations that are receiving money from the city, organizations like Legal Aid and OPCC. I personally have been client of both of those organizations, and I think the money of the city is not well-spent. I think also that an energy issue, consider a municipal utility company to keep the energy producing here, and by definition, it should be a not-for-profit energy company, and exploring that idea will give us incredible revenue. The money of OPCC, we have to train the homeless people. If not, we're throwing money to a problem and we are not solving it, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And I'm a very compassionate person, but we need to do something about that. If we keep funding these organizations, they're operating as a business. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin McHugh.
Hey, folks, thanks for being here. I'm Kevin McHugh. I got to serve on the city council through the Great Recession, so I know what confronting cuts is all about. And I quickly learned there is no line item in the city budget for fraud and waste. It's not that easy. We did make cuts, and I'm very proud that we made them in a way that residents didn't notice. We made cuts of economy, not cuts where we took things away from you, and I think that is key. We prepaid some of the city pension applications, actually saving potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars per year in the long run. We got through the recession, and then the state took away redevelopment money, and that's the crisis we face now. All that money got sucked up to Sacramento, and we don't have the money we need to create affordable housing. That is why I support H and HH. If we're to be the community we want to be, the egalitarian community for everybody, we must produce affordable housing, and we have to suck it up and pay for it.
Thank you. John Mann.
Well, I'm surprised nobody said pensions. What's going on in this city is the city employees endorse the city council candidates, and so they get a really, really juicy deal. That's one thing I want to put it into, starting at the top with real high salaries. For one city manager, you could hire twenty-five other jobs, and the city has a lot of things that needs to be done that aren't being done because people are just sitting at their desks and playing with their computers. I think the city employees would probably know a lot of different ways to cut the city budget, but I would have it put online with a search function. That way, the citizens can go online in a city hall forum, and they can make cuts. Also, the budget, the revenues of this city don't really serve the residents. It serves the city employees, and that's scandalous, and that has to stop. So I would create a committee of residents.
Michael Feinstein.
So we do a two-year budget in Santa Monica, and in year two, what I would cut is the corporate welfare subsidies to the airline, airport pilots, who we're subsidizing with the general fund at Santa Monica Airport. So once we turn it into a park, we are going to be hemorrhaging our own tax dollars to pay for their access to land that we own. Number two, the buildings on the north side of the airport, we can raise that and collect more rents that way. The more forward-thinking, long-term move is when Proposition 30 sunsets in 2018 on the state level, what replaces it needs to include a tax increment zone for public transit corridors where investments like the Expo Line increase property values, and we need to recoup those increased values and return them for use in the communities where they generate that value to preserve and be restricted to affordable housing.
Thank you, and thanks to all the candidates for your answers to round one. I'm going to turn it back over to Ann for round two.
Okay, so now, round two will consist of five questions, each one answered by three or two candidates called on in random order. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer one of the questions. Candidates, please remember that during round four, you will choose a question from either round two or three to answer. We have provided you with paper and pen, so you can jot down the question you might want to answer in round four. So let's get going. The first question is related to a multi-generational city. A recent Wall Street Journal article reported that about half of millennials, meaning those born after 1980, have a net worth of less than eleven thousand dollars each. The question is, should the city council be concerned with promoting a housing policy that creates new housing affordable to young individuals and families within the city? If so, how? And the first person we're going to ask to answer that is Kevin McHugh.
When I first moved to Santa Monica, I was in my mid-twenties, and I would have thought myself very fortunate to have eleven thousand dollars. I was living with that Volkswagen bus. So I know it's like to move into a town and try to find housing, and I'm committed to that multi-generational point of view, because I've been there, and someday it will be where I am in the age spectrum, and we have to look out for each other. We need to produce more affordable housing in this town, not housing that is high-end housing, not housing that only somebody who's at the end of their career can afford, but housing that matches the jobs that are here. We have done very well in creating jobs in Santa Monica. We've become a regional job center, and we've become Silicon Beach. The problem is the people who take those jobs can't afford to live here, so they have to commute and pollute, and that's destroying our planet. Those greenhouse gases are going to get us all, young or old. So again, I'll go back to Measures H and HH as one of the solutions, and we also, through our zoning, need to require developers to produce more truly affordable housing.
Thank you. And now Brett O'Neal, no applause, please. Frank Gruber.
Well, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Kevin said, but the point is that when you look at the income levels for the jobs here, in Santa Monica, the jobs increased hugely from 1980 to 2000, from fifty-two thousand to seventy-four thousand jobs, and even more jobs since then, with very little housing development. And that housing development is scattered over the entire range of incomes. So it's not enough to say that the market provides housing when the housing itself doesn't get built. That just makes the market price for the market housing go higher and put more people out. We have a very good policy in Santa Monica, a citizen-enacted law, that thirty percent of our housing must be affordable, half of that to low-income, the rest of it to moderate. We need to come up with policies that not only increase the thirty percent, but also the seventy percent, and we also need to create family-friendly housing for the next generation of forming families.
Thank you. And the next question has to do with aging in place. Rent control and nonprofit housing developers like Community Corporation provide excellent opportunities for Santa Monica seniors to age in place. The city also works with nonprofits to make sure that Santa Monica's older residents get vital services even as time restricts their mobility. The question is, what services do the city or its nonprofit partners offer seniors that are indispensable? What is lacking for seniors in the city's social services network? And we'll start with Nick Bowles.
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, aging in place is, is a serious, a serious thing that we're looking at in the future, and I've, I've actually personally went with Meals on Wheels West through this neighborhood in Santa Monica and delivered food to a lot of these people, and what I've found is, one of the major contributors to depression in our aging population is isolation. So I would really, really hope to invest money into different ways to help our senior community collaborate and listen and become part of the new generation that's moving in, whether that's with helping, you know, helping get them out for maybe lawn bowling tournaments. I've been to a couple of those at Douglas Park. Teaching different ways to collaborate using digital means would be another way to create community, and just making sure there's living arrangements that invoke clubs and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence Slater.
Thank you very much. I think that one of the greatest flaws in the rent control that we have today is the fact that if someone is not in need because of their, their economic status, that they are, you know, have to move along. There are a number of rent-controlled properties and, and units that are being used as storage, used as a second home while the people have moved out of town, or have also, you know, have two people living in them that are making over six figures each. So I think that that is something that really has to be looked at as a way to be able to open up some of the existing units so that it can be for those that are seriously in need, much like our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Pam O'Connor.
Yes, same question.
Same question.
And aging in place, you know, as one ages, there are many different stages, from being an active senior to getting to the point where if one lives old enough, you may become frail elderly, and at that point, you might be more enchaîné. That's when you need the kinds of services that are provided by nonprofits that the city supports, such as Meals on Wheels, that delivers those services. But there are other kinds of things, too, that enrich people's lives, from the large print book collection at the library, from those kinds of services. But really, to be truly intergenerational, we need to support people at all ages, and universal access, making sure that every place has that universal access, and as we are building homes, building new housing, that they're universally accessible, because one of the most common things is that people have some mobility challenges. And as we grow our transit network, to make sure that there's besides the on-demand services, that we look into new ways to travel around, there are slow-moving vehicles, people might not be able to drive a car, but they may be able to get around in a number of other ways. So again, a multi-generational city is a strong city.
Thank you. The next question has to do with development trade-offs. If Santa Monica were less of a regional, international tourist employment and shopping destination, the city would have less revenue to pay for a high level of public services. The question is, do you think Santa Monica's commercial success comes at the expense of residents? If so, what services currently funded by Santa Monica's diverse tax base should be reduced or cut? And the first person we're going to ask is Whitney Scott Bane.
The first thing we should do is try to help our younger students that are going to Santa Monica College. And it's lower their, anybody who lives in the city, they get a lower tax break. You know, they get a, if they're living here, they're going to school, they're trying to work a job. We lower that. On top of that, too, we lower their fees going to Santa Monica College. Everybody deserves a good education, and that's a good school to go to. The other thing, too, if you've ever been down here, the city is not made for you and I, it's made for tourists. Look around on Saturday and Sunday, it is crowded down there, it is incredibly crowded. Look down at the pier, sure, they're spending money, and then they go away. But what about us? What about us? We need to benefit by that.
Thank you. And next, John Mann.
Following up on, on the tourism angle, there's a lot of money that's brought into this city. It's a very wealthy city, and it's not going to the residents, it's going to the city One of the things that can be done to alleviate that or to re-credit the distribution of revenue is to stop, you know, hiring new people in the city, and if we are going to hire people, hire people that live in the city, and make this city truly, you know, a well-being city, which it isn't right now, even though... even though, you know, we have everything imaginable. We have the beach, we have all kinds of services. But a lot of the services are going, you know, for example, the homeless services. They're not really helping them find, you know, stability in their lives. They're just fostering their dependency. One of the other things that I'd like to see real quick...
Thank you. The next question has to do with Bergamot Station. The city council recently voted to move forward with plans to redevelop the Bergamot Station Arts Center. There is, however, still some controversy over what uses should be added to the land in order to generate revenue. The question is, do you believe that profit-generating uses, such as a boutique hotel, should be included in the final redevelopment plan? If not, how should the city pay to continue its policy of subsidizing arts uses at Bergamot Station? And we'll start this round with Michael Feinstein.
The word boutique, I don't know. I don't get it, but I, really. I think a low-scale hotel makes sense. Six stories is out of control, in my mind, and I don't think the public will go for that. I'm interested in seeing what sort of mix of other arts uses that we build upon the galleries and add to, and I'm really hoping that the arts community can come together to try and identify what that right mix is. And I really appreciate, I think it was Kevin's motion, to have a community task force to help facilitate that process. And I think with the combination of those two dynamics, we're going to get the mix right. But I don't think we need to sell our souls to the sky for a good arts community.
Thank you. And just a reminder to the candidates, everyone has agreed to form ground rules and guidelines which prohibit personal rejoinders or rebuttals, that wasn't really a rebuttal.
It was a compliment, sorry.
And the next person who is going to answer this will be Zoe Moonkenner.
Hi. I was one of the people that spoke at the city council meeting regarding this issue, and I'm committed myself to open pop-up stores that rotate every month, that combine commerce and arts and food industries to create more revenue. And there will not only be at the Bergamot Station, there will be all around the city. And we will invite people from West Hollywood and Beverly Hills and Cino and other cities in Los Angeles to contribute to those pop-up stores. I oppose any hotel at the Bergamot Station.
Thank you very much. And then the last question in this round was submitted by Santa Monica Spoke. Sustainable, lovable communities are characterized as denser, walkable, and bikeable neighborhoods with mixed-use development. Santa Monica has demonstrated commitment to improving bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and safety. Our question is this, do you believe this is the appropriate direction for the city? Why or why not? Please cite an example of what you think the city is currently doing, right or wrong, to advance these goals. And the first person who will be answering this will be Phil Brock.
The standard TOD-type development that Spoke is talking about works in blighted communities. It works in areas that don't have neighborhoods already. So, an example is North Hollywood, where an earthquake devastated their community. The arrival of the subway reinvigorated their community because of the loud building to occur. The problem in Santa Monica is, we don't have a blighted community. The areas around our train, coming train stations already have neighborhoods. So, I don't want to see the mid-city's neighborhood destroyed with four-to-six-story apartment houses where there are people in rent-controlled housing that would lose their houses. I'll stop.
Thank you. And Jerry Rubin?
Well, thank you. I absolutely think the city is going in the very right direction and looking forward to the light rail coming here in 2016. The Big Blue Bus has reevaluated a lot of routes and are tweaking them that are going to make it compatible with the light rail, and that should be supported. I never had a car in my life, I never had a driver's license. I recognize the necessity for cars, but everybody can try to work out a plan where they could get out of their car at least 10% of the time and use alternative transportation. I think we're going in the very right direction with bicycles. I don't want to see bikes on the sidewalk, but automobiles have to understand that bikes have the same rights as they do in the streets. So, I think we're going in the right direction on alternative transportation.
Thank you very much, and I guess we're ready for round three now.
All right. So, during this round, each candidate will answer a different question from each other. I will read the question first and then indicate the candidate who's to answer the question. As a reminder, in the following round, you'll have your choice of questions from this past round and this coming round, so pay attention so you can pick the one that you like. First question relates to the civic center plan. If elected to the city council, you'll be revising Santa Monica's civic center plan. What is your vision for the civic center area in the next 10 years? And should the land be used for revenue-generating purposes to fund the civic auditorium revitalization? That question goes to Jerry Rubin.
I was actually the fellow that went to the Landowners Commission to see if they would landmark the civic, and they unanimously did. It's a gem, it just needs to be polished. I'm glad Phil Brock and a lot of people, Frank Gruber, are on the, they're going to have a meeting on the 27th. I urge everyone to attend. We have to save and revitalize the Santa Monica Civic Auditorium, and if it takes some revenue-generating, creative ways to do that in the area, I'm all for it. I think it would serve the community well, and it's just so crucial to help enhance our cultural and art expectations, especially when art is now being listed as a sustainable city goal. And we definitely have to keep that chain reaction sculpture there as well. That's a cultural icon.
Thank you. The next question is about civility. Recent public meetings about planning Santa Monica's future have become increasingly heated, with groups of people actively shouting down and jeering those voicing opinions that differ from their own. The question is, please discuss specifically what you think the root cause of this is and what you would do as a council member to encourage civility. And that question goes to Phil Brock.
Change the leadership of the city council, that's pretty simple. We started, I think, two years ago, I started to feel that there was a large degree of angst among residents of our city. That turned to cynicism, and now it's turned to anger. We can change that by making sure citizens feel involved in decisions. We can change that by making sure there is transparency. We can make sure that we change that by making sure citizens feel involved at the first levels of engagement rather than the end of a plan. And in addition to that, we can also change that by making sure our city council members are listening to the community and to our neighborhoods. And I think that's really the most important thing. That's why meetings have become uncivil. Citizens don't feel listened to.
Thank you. The next question is about traffic. What do you think are the causes of traffic congestion, and what policies would you pursue to reduce its impact on daily life? What successful policies from other cities do you think would work well in Santa Monica? That question goes to Terrence Slater.
Well, I supported Proposition T, which would have kept, capped all development and put a moratorium on that, along with Bobby Shriver, Ted Winter, and another council person that I'll be not mentioning from the dais here. But if we had done that, it would have been in the mix.
Please direct your comments to the audience. And, audience, please refrain from any type of outbursts during the forum. Let the candidates' words speak for themselves.
Do I have the rest of my time?
Yeah.
The idea that the density has gotten completely out of hand and the fact that we're maxed out, there should be no more development here other than what's existing today. If they want to replace it in the exact size that it's existed, that's fine. The city is the largest landowner in Santa Monica. All of those areas should be green for the residents, and I think it would be a better place for that, we'd find a lot more civility and air to breathe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question is about Big Blue Bus. In preparation for the Expo line opening in 2016, Big Blue Bus is preparing to undergo major service changes. Creating new routes could require cutting back service along other existing routes or increasing revenue possibly by raising fares. The question is, what can or should Big Blue Bus do to provide easy access to Expo line stations? That question goes to Michael Feinstein.
The first thing I want to say is that when I was on the council under John Cato and Stephanie Nigraff, there was a really good feel in the community with Big Blue Bus, and I'm really concerned with community meetings recently, when we've been talking about rerouting the routes that connect him to Expo, that the feeling isn't there, and people are feeling really mad that the connections aren't going to be there. So, we have to get that right so that people can make that last mile work. The difficult trade-off we have is to try and keep the fares low, still realize that Santa Monicans want to take the bus regionally and not have to cut the regional lines while we also try and make it connect locally. And that's going to really be a difficult balancing act, but one that we have to get right. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is about the Expo line. What can the city do to encourage people to ride the Expo light rail when it opens in early 2016? And how can the city discourage people from driving to the stations during peak travel times, thereby adding to congestion on the roadways? That question goes to Pam O'Connor.
This kind of leads, connects to the previous question. What kinds of services that are provided within the city to allow people to move and get to Expo would include services from Big Blue Bus? And the Big Blue Bus needs to continue to be a community and a sub-regional conveyor of folks. But we need to also use them and figure out, how can we use the bus system to connect to Expo? And thinking ahead, there could be ways, using smart technology, that besides the circulator buses, there could be on-demand services tied to technology that we don't see today. So, there's lots of opportunities there. We figure, have to figure out how, ways to fund it. Cap and trade money from the state will be available for transportation as we move forward in the county. A new gas and sales tax, some of that would have to go to operations. And in addition to that, other kinds of things, like bike share, which is now being pursued both in downtown Santa Monica, and we hope in downtown LA at the same time, to provide and actually finally create a county-wide bike share, as well as opportunities for car share.
Thank you. The next question pertains to civic auditorium funding. While many think the civic auditorium must be saved, it is also clear that it will cost tens of millions of dollars to bring the building up to modern standards and to subsidize ongoing operations. The question is, should the city fund the civic auditorium revitalization? And if so, where should the money come from? That question goes to Kevin McHume.
One of the obvious side effects of our being embedded in a metropolis that is gridlocked by traffic is that we Santa Monicans have less access to cultural things in downtown LA than we used to. And to my mind, that points to our Santa Monica Civic as something that we need to look for in the future to be the venue that provides those cultural things. Now, of course, it has a wonderful history of having done that. It fell upon hard times. It broke my heart to mothball the civic, and I voted against it, but I was overcome by the majority of the council. I do want to reopen the civic. I think that the civic can be a money maker. I think the civic can attract people into Santa Monica and help other businesses in Santa Monica. And I think that the civic can be done without our having to invest a great deal of money, because what we can do is finally be a partner to operate the civic on our behalf. We, as a community, though, have to come together and say, the civic is not something we're willing to lose.
Thank you. The next question, actually, I'll mention for our recent arrival, that during this round, each candidate is being asked one question. I'll say the question first and then identify the candidate. And keep track of the questions that are being asked, because you'll have the opportunity in the next round to pick one of the questions to answer. So, this one pertains to pensions and benefits. About 72% of Santa Monica's general fund goes to personnel costs for the city's 1,700 employees. However, the city has little control over the rising costs of healthcare and pensions. The question is, what do you believe is the best strategy for preventing these costs from becoming an unsustainable burden on the city budget without reducing employees' wages below a livable standard? And that question goes to Sue Himmelrich.
Well, I've said many times that I think the last place we should be cutting costs is on the backs of our employees and most particularly our public safety employees. And I feel that strongly. I think that we have 2,200 employees in the city. I'm not aware of how efficient our hiring is about. I understand that we spend $15 million on outside contractors that may be unnecessary. I think it is a complex issue. But I also don't believe in reducing our budget on the backs of our public safety employees and our low-level workers. Did I answer the question?
I think so.
Yay! With 15 seconds to spare? Like that, okay, thank you.
I'll let our last candidate join us on the table, and I'll just remind the last two who arrived that during this round, I'm asking a question, then telling the candidate who will respond to it. Each candidate getting one question throughout this round. And please keep track of these questions, because you'll have the opportunity to answer one in the next round that you didn't get to answer in this round. The next question is about the Santa Monica Airport. In July, an agreement between the federal government and the city of Santa Monica regarding the use of the quit-plane land, including the western 2,000 feet of the runway, expires. The FAA has made it, made clear its intent to challenge the city's ability to close the western end of the runway. The question is, should the city pursue closing the western end of the runway, even if it means spending city resources on a legal battle? If the city is successful, how should the city plan to use the freed-up land by the partial closure? That question goes to Jonathan Mann.
I was the very first candidate years ago to start talking about closing the airport and making it a park. And now, suddenly, almost overnight, everybody wants to do it. So, that's very rewarding to me, to be in advance of that. I definitely think the city should continue all legal approaches, and as soon as we close that section of the airport, we should go after the entire airport and create a park that's connected to Clover Park. That land was originally a bond that was voted on, I think, in the 20s. And it was stipulated at the time that it would be used for a park. So, I think that's a very strong legal point, to give that land back to the city, to the community. It belongs to us, it's our land.
Thank you. The next question was posted on Santa Monica Next by a member of the public, and I will read it verbatim. It pertains to parking at the Expo stations. Is the metro supposed to only be for people coming into Santa Monica, not for residents to use to go east for work and/or cultural events? I want to use the metro, the commenter, but I also need a place to leave my car when I use it. I find it absolutely absurd and infuriating that no parking... I find it absolutely absurd and infuriating that no parking is being built." So, the question is, please explain why the city is not building parking facilities next to the three metro stations in Santa Monica. That question goes to Richard McKinnon.
We need to divorce why they're not building it with what should happen. And the train was built with the regional tax dollars, and every dollar went into building the train. And the city declined to add parking to that. And the urban theory is that when you build a train, people walk and they change their patterns of behavior. And that is absolutely correct, particularly if you're building a train in Chicago or New York, where there are already dense patterns of living around a train. People immediately cluster and start to move towards the train. That is less likely to occur in Los Angeles, where in fact, we have to produce a large-scale culture shift over a long period of time. And the immediacy of the train will not produce dramatic changes in behavior straight away, particularly at our end. And so, it is inevitable that we will need to be looking at some small amount of parking around the train stations fairly immediately. And we saw that reflected in the memorial park plan, where a parking station, between 500,000 and 1,000 car parks, is in there.
Thank you, Richard. That's a good job. Sorry. Yes, my apologies. You have a timer over there.
Oh, and I don't think you mentioned what the timer was either.
My apologies. You have 60 seconds to answer each of these questions. I, my apologies. The next question pertains to suburban sprawl. Is a planning, sorry, suburban sprawl is a planning paradigm that has dominated in Southern California for much of the post-war era. Many believe it is a major threat to regional sustainability because it encourages reliance on single occupancy vehicles, is much less water-efficient than denser urban infill development, and it encroaches on natural habitats that have not yet been developed. The question is, as the region's population continues to grow, should Santa Monica help reverse the trend of suburban sprawl? Why or why not, and if so, how? That question goes to Frank Gruber.
That's a great question. The fact is that I've often called Santa Monica a post-sprawl city, because our sprawl came here two generations ago or longer after the war. That's when all the apartments were built, our population reached 80,000 in the early 60s. It's basically the same right now. So, what Santa Monica has shown, that on the bones or whatever, the skeleton of a dispersed suburban model, you can create a terrific city. I mean, Santa Monica was an industrial suburb of Los Angeles when the Douglas Plan was here and all that. And we've created a wonderful, diverse, interesting city, where a lot of people have raised their families in a non-sprawl environment. The challenge right now, as I was talking before, is to come up with a new model. It's not only in Santa Monica, but all over the country in urban areas for new families.
Thank you. The next question relates to transportation and going car-free. Between 2000 and 2012, San Francisco has seen a net increase of 11,000 households, and 88% of them have been car-free, bringing the city's percentage of car-free households up to nearly one-third. Here's the question. Should Santa Monica try to mirror this trend by adopting policies to encourage future and current residents to live a car-free or car-light lifestyle? Why or why not? That question goes to Jennifer Kennedy.
I think the answer to that generally is yes, but we definitely have to recognize that Santa Monica is a diverse city, and so our policies have to reflect, you know, reflect this. We need to have policies that are equitable for all of our residents. Near the Expo station, for example, there are potentially opportunities to really right-size parking so that future residents have truly affordable housing and so that they are Expo riders. But we have to make sure that we focus on circulation improvements, not just for drivers, but for pedestrians and cyclists. And in doing this in a united way, we can help more people go car-free. One of the ways to do that is with mixed-use sites, mixed-use projects that have ground-floor retail that is truly neighborhood-serving, so that people...
Thank you, Jennifer. Sorry, time's up.
No worries.
The next question relates to homelessness and social services. Since Santa Monica adopted its Homelessness Action Plan in 2008, the city has seen a decline in the number of people sleeping in its streets and in shelters. Where has Santa Monica succeeded in its efforts to combat homelessness? What can the city do to better address the root cause of homelessness? That question goes to Whitney Scott-Bain.
What we need to do is educate the homeless and give them jobs. We have a great college over there, and there's kids that want to be teachers. So, why don't we have them come down four hours a day and teach them the basics of reading and mathematics, English language, and how to write? We put them in a situation where we pay them a minimum wage job, working with the city, whether it's cleaning up trash or working in computers. We start working with them. We start giving them the faith in themselves, where they can go out and they can go out and get a job, and they have the experience, they have the work experience, and everybody wins out of this. Then they can move on with their lives and go out and get a car and, you know, have a family, you know? Whatever they want to do, we can, we can help them.
Please give the audience a comment, that's enough, or two, perhaps a bit more. Thank you. The next question pertains to education. How do you envision the relationship between the city and the school district in the future? What about, what about the relationship would you like to change and what would you like to continue? That question goes to Zoe Munpaner.
Thank you. I was a teacher at New Road School for two years, so education is something that is dear to my heart. The Charter for Compassion has a very strong and robust education policy and education platform, and I'm presenting it to the Santa Monica Malibu School District in the next meeting. And we have to merge the elements of compassion with education, because right now, we're seeing a trend around the country where children are killing each other in schools, and we want to prevent that. We have a strong curriculum to integrate into the curriculum that they have right now. And I think the city should fund this program as part of their wellbeing project, to integrate a curriculum of compassion that works flawlessly with the academics and their curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. The last question of this round pertains, comes from Santa Monica's Vote. Residents have already identified the desire to preserve the character of current neighborhoods and concentrate growth to specific corridors, as outlined in the land use and circulation element. Our question is this: In general, would you support growth limited to these corridors? If not, what type of development and policies do you believe will help Santa Monica meet the demand for new housing in a way that helps people to drive less and walk, bike, and use transit more? That question goes to Nichols.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think in general, we should give it to those corridors, but what we need to do is really focus future development on pedestrian-first and bicyclist-first policy. I mean, we've got Kent in the audience right there, who was going down Michigan the other day, got hit by a Domino's driver. And we need to speed up this Mango initiative to make sure that Michigan Avenue is more cyclist-friendly, that vehicles respect bicyclists, and that we make sure that it's easier to use alternative transport than getting in a vehicle. Because nobody likes being stuck on lockdown at their house from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM every night. It's, it gets tiring. So, I would definitely think that we need to make sure that all future development is focused on making Santa Monica a place you can live, work, and play, and that you no longer need to use your vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. And that wraps up round three. I'm going to hand it back off to Ann for round four.
All right. This is the moment you've been waiting for, your chance to answer the question you just wished you'd gotten. So, we'll start with Kevin McKeon.
Hi. I'm Kevin McKeon, and you know, there were questions about development and traffic, which seemed to be obvious for me, but actually, my voting record on the council on overdeveloped, it's very clear, I voted against the Heinz project, I posed the condos on the Miramar. So, I want to talk about aging in place, because I'm doing it. And it's a drag. It's not a drag to be in place, it's a drag to be aging. But I've been in the same apartment for 38 years, so I've gotten to age in place. And that's due in great respect to rent control, which has provided housing stability. Another of the questions asked about what do seniors most need and don't have? That's it, folks, housing stability. If we don't provide ongoing housing for our seniors, we can't afford to lose these people. They helped build this town. When the city council voted to evict vulnerable seniors at the Belvedere Trail Park, that broke my heart. That was against everything I thought our city stood for. And I will stand for continued, solid, livable housing for seniors.
Thank you. And just in fairness to the candidates who just came in, I'm just going to give you a sense of the kinds of questions that were about the civic center plan, pensions and benefits, civility, traffic, Big Blue Bus, Expo lines, civic auditorium funding, aging in place, Santa Monica Airport. These are the kinds of things we were asking about. So, the next person who can answer the question of their choice will be Jennifer Kennedy.
I am going to talk briefly, a little bit, about our small businesses in Santa Monica. I am, as a member of the Planning Commission and a resident who is very familiar with the development that's happening in Santa Monica, I'm really concerned that pressure for massive development or pressure for oversized development, pressure for development that meets or exceeds maximum height and density parameters, is threatening our small businesses, our small locally-owned businesses, whether it's our boutiques, locally-owned restaurants. I feel that we need to really focus on, as we go forward, making sure that we have standards and policies that make it easier for locally-owned small businesses to open and thrive. And the way, one of the ways that we can do that is ensuring that the ground-floor retail in our mixed-use buildings has opportunities for smaller, smaller-sized retail.
Thank you. Michael Feinstein.
So, I am a big-picture creative thinker, and in the civic center, one of the things I've been proposing overall-city-wide is to cap over and bridge over the top of the I-10 freeway for about two-thirds of the city, including Ocean de Forest. And between Maine and Forest, what I see is capping over the freeway there and having the Sears Building turn into a world-cultural facility, and then create a plaza and maybe a Barcelona Las Ramblas kind of development there with some Spanish Steps-type development, like we had in Rome with the steps that development, but Spanish Steps going up the top of Forest Street, and creating a place that people would come on public transit with a new exciting public plaza. We talked before about having it being a fun place for young people in town, a place to live, creating non-commercial public spaces where you can be, and creating a new form of economic development that isn't automobile-dependent, but is public transit development. And I think we need to think, to plan for the greatness of tomorrow today.
Thank you. John and Ann.
Okay, you start the timer now. Housing, sustainability, I'm not the one to talk about civility. You know, 20 years ago was when we should have been thinking about these things, because we've created a situation in the city now where people are leaving the city, and there's a huge traffic jam, because they work here and don't live here, and then the people that live here don't work here. So, that's too late. It's already happened. So, what we need to do now is throw out the loose, have a complete moratorium on any new development until the California incline is finished and the light rail is finished. And then, if there's any more building at all, if we really want this city to be sustainable, we have to let the residents make those decisions from now on, not the city council. We need a clean slate on the council with completely new people, so we can start over with a fresh start.
Thank you.
I want to kind of combine question number one and question number four from the first round, which were aging in place, generational, and sustainable communities, and kind of talk about my dad and mom, who moved to downtown Santa Monica in 2003 when they were in their early 80s. And they found a place that was great to grow old in. They never had a car. My mom is no longer alive, but my dad's still there. He can go to Von's, get to his doctor really easy over at St. John's. It's a great place to do that. The fact is, though, that he's in a building full of young families in formation. When I go over there for lunch, the, just about always, there's a young couple with a baby in a stroller. Where are they going to go next? That's a big question. But the fact is that, that you, 20 years ago, in response to a lawsuit that the city lost about housing, it had to have housing, it made decisions to put that housing in downtown, and it worked very well. That doesn't contribute to our traffic problem.
Thank you. Bill Broad.
Well, I think everyone's sort of doing a little bit of a potpourri, but I want to talk briefly about our residents, because earlier, people talked a little bit, one of the other questions, about civility. And I mentioned that in many cases, our residents no longer feel that they are wanted or needed in our city, that our city is about our 7.4 million tourists, it's about our 125,000 work visitors every day. So, I think we need to, as I would say in New Orleans, add a little lamia, a little extra, that extra donut, that extra oyster for our residents. You know, we talk about our budget. We have to make sure that our budget is spent wisely, that we don't install bus stools instead of bus benches, that we give our residents a little bit extra in our city. A dash dial circulator system, for instance, for our bus system is mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Bolz.
Thank you. So, representing the single-largest demographic here in Santa Monica, ages 25 to 35, I think it would be appropriate to address the housing policy specifically in that young professionals and addressing the ever-increasing rental pressures that are on our, our generation. And this has really led to a lack of community ownership, as well as civic engagement among the younger population. You know, we, we, we want, we want to be able to raise a family, we want to be able to plant roots here. We shouldn't have to live with roommates. We should be able to have space. You know, we, we like the Expo, we like transportation, we want housing to be affordable. And I think the biggest thing is making sure that we invest in our future generation and build proper housing to correct the housing jobs imbalance that is currently disrupting our future. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no pause. Jerry Rubin.
Thank you. And as the oldest candidate up here, I want to support everything Nick Bolz does say here, as the youngest candidate. But we also want to support our Emeritus College, we also want to support our Commission on the Senior Community, the Y Senior Services and everything. I want to address what I think is a false argument between tourists and residents. I know so many residents that really love the direction the city's going, including me and my wife, Marissa. If you're making a city pedestrian-friendly, extra, safer, extra, cultural-friendly, extra, everything better for people who are visiting from around the country and around the world, it ultimately benefit residents as well. I love meeting people from... I love meeting people from all over the country and all over the world and sharing those differences and similarities. And I really strongly think even the smallest business doesn't want empty people walking by their street. I mean, empty streets. They want people to come in and buy their goods or sell themselves of their services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I guess, right, that we all like each other's interests, but we can't be done with each other. Thank you. Zoe Munpaner.
I want to address the civility question because I believe that Santa Monica governance does not have a clue of how that works and how that looks. And in order to learn about that, you have to be educated about that. There is a unique summit of policy leaders that is going to take place in San Francisco on November 13 and November 14, and it's the Compassionate Empathy Convention or Summit. And there will be Mayor Greg Fisher from Louisville, Kentucky is going to be there, who was the mayor that started the Compassion Cities Initiative by declaring his city the most compassionate city in the world unless proven otherwise. So there will be leaders there, and I will suggest that every member of city council, the chief of the police, and the several directors of all the agencies attend that conference.
Thank you very much. And Sue Kimmerich.
Thank you. I want to follow up on what Phil said, and particularly I want to talk about residents versus special interests.
I'm sorry, I really do have to repeat. We are... Everybody has agreed to the Form of Ground Rules and Guidelines which prohibit personal, regina, or rebuttal.
I missed that, I'm sorry. I'll never mention his name again. This one I can actually sit up right. I want to talk about residents and special interests. I believe that we have many special interests in our city: developers, consultants, business interests, lobbyists, lawyers, who our residents perceive get into City Hall before they do. It's been my observation, being on the Planning Commission, that often that is the case, that the last people to know are us. And I'm running for city council in large part because I think we should be involved, we, the residents, should be involved in the beginning, middle, and end of every project that happens in the city because it is our city. And I'm running to help us take our city back.
Thank you very much. Richard McKinnon.
Let's think about the expo line for a minute. It was discussed earlier. It is, without doubt, the single most disruptive and innovative force in our city going forward for many, many generations, and I'm not sure the city is yet ready for it. It disrupts, and we've seen it in the Pico and Mid-City areas, and displaces residents. And we're going to need to, as a city, take action to ensure that people who've lived here for a long time continue to do so. But the benefits in terms of changing the traffic, the connectivity, and enhancing the way we live going forward are enormous. But it's a cultural change, and that cultural change will not come easily. So this expo line, for all of its benefits and all its values, poses great challenges to the city. And I'm not sure we're yet facing them, nor are we yet dealing with the issues that many of the citizens want, which is how they'll get to the expo line and how they'll use it going forward. This is the great challenge of dealing with what will be one of the great booms for our city.
Thank you very much. Aaron Flader.
Thank you very much. I think it's really important to bring the city back into, under the power of the residents. I think the fact that the city council as it stands and previous city councils have shown the inability to be able to rein in development. The idea that we need to keep the Santa Monica Airport open, we need to make sure that that is voted on by the residents. I strongly support Measure D. I believe that not only it being an emergency asset to our community, that if we look at Ocean Park, at the Ocean Park area, Ocean Avenue and Pico especially, that's what our city council calls limited and more responsible development. We can't afford to have that in our Santa Monica Airport. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam O'Connor.
I'll go back to the first question about the multi-generational housing. We have two trends converging at the same time. We have the largest generation ever, the millennials, who have come of age during a recession, when we've lost thousands of jobs in Southern California, thus the hard time finding jobs and the salaries. At the same time, the baby boom generation, the next largest, is aging. So we're going to be seeing over the next years that dynamic of seniors, some of whom will age in place, others who will leave their single-family homes but who want to stay in Santa Monica, who want to live in someplace that's a smaller footprint, more compact. So our challenge is how do we build that affordable housing? That housing is affordable to people at the low end of the spectrum, of the income spectrum, that are living on fixed incomes, as well as people who are in the more moderate. Because many of those millennials and our children who we educate, we want them to come back. We want them to have good jobs. I support HHH so we can build that housing, that housing for our millennial generation, our seniors, and be an inclusive city.
Thank you very much. Whitney Scott Bane.
You know, my last answer was pretty funny. But I will tell you, what's really funny is seven people governing the lives of 90,000. That's pretty funny. But the stakes aren't. The interesting thing is, I'm very partial to the seniors. And they can offer a lot. My mother, who was 88 years old at the time, was victimized in this city. And she was going to be kicked out of a rent-controlled apartment she'd lived in for 33 years. 33 years. Never bothered anybody, walked with a cane, very quiet. So I went to SMUR. SMUR did nothing. I went to Santa Monica Rent Control. They did nothing. I called every single city council member, every single one, for help. I only got two, two replies back. The late Herb Katz, which my parents campaigned for, I went to school with his son, played in the band with him, Glenn. I dated his daughter, Dana. He said, "There's nothing I can do."
Thank you very much. And now it looks like we do have time for a lightning round.
All right. Lightning sounds exciting. So we'll try to make it exciting. Just going to flip to my lightning round page. So because we have a little bit of extra time, candidates will be asked a series of questions to which they will reply yes or no using these handy signs. So when we... Please wait till I finish reading the question, and then you will hold up your sign, yes or no. And these questions pertain to the ballot measures that will be on the ballot this fall. So Measure HH asks voters, "Shall an ordinance be adopted that amends the real estate transfer tax so that for commercial and non-commercial real estate sold for $1 million or more, the tax rate would be $9 for each $1,000 of sale price? Do you support Measure HH?" And hold it up there for... Give it a count of three. One, two, three. Thank you. Next question. Measure HH asks voters, "If the proposed transfer tax on commercial and non-commercial real estate is approved by voters, should the revenue be used to preserve, repair, renovate, and construct affordable housing for low-income people who work or live in Santa Monica, including seniors, veterans, working families, and persons with disabilities? Do you support Measure HH?" Thank you very much. Measure LC asks voters, "Shall the city charter be amended to, first, prohibit new development on airport land except for parks, public open space, and public recreation facilities until the voters approve limits on the uses and developments that may occur on the land? And second, shall the city charter be amended to affirm the city council's authority to manage the airport and to close all or part of it? Do you support Measure LC?" All right, thanks so much. Measure D asks voters, "Shall the Santa Monica City Charter be amended to require the city to continue to operate the Santa Monica Airport in a manner that supports its aviation uses unless the voters approve the airport's closure or change in use? And until the voter approval occurs, the city shall be prohibited from imposing additional restrictions on aviation support services to tenants and airport users that inhibited fuel sales or the full use of the airport facilities? So do you support Measure D?" Thanks very much. And lastly, Measure FS asks voters, "Shall the city charter be amended to establish a maximum annual registration fee of up to $288 per controlled rental unit and to limit the amount that landlords may pass through to tenants to 50% of the registration fee? Do you support Measure FS?" All right. Thanks so much to the candidates for this lightning round. I hope that was as thrilling for you as it was for me. Sorry, I shouldn't make any jokes. Concluding statements are next, and handing it back to Ann.
Okay, the time for questions is up. And it's now time for closing statements. Each candidate has 60 seconds. We will go in the opposite order of the first question. And we'll start with our candidates who just came in. So we'll start with Jennifer Kennedy.
Hi. Well, I'm running for city council because I'm passionate about controlling growth, about preserving our residential neighborhoods and protecting residents and protecting existing affordable housing, and improving our city's public participation process, as well as preserving Santa Monica's unique community character. These are my top priorities in addition to making sure that development that happens in Santa Monica equitably serves all segments of our diverse community. I'm focused on advancing Santa Monica's already robust environmental programs, addressing climate change, and managing water conservation during this drought period and beyond. I have been a former... I was a former rent control board member from 2002 to 2010 and a planning commissioner for the past four years.
Also, a problem that I have with the city elections is they're pretty much determined by Santa Monica's renters' rights and city employees. Thank you very much. I'm Jonathan Mann, and I agree with that.
Richard McKinnon.
I'm Richard McKinnon, and I'm running for the city council. I run to put residents first at the heart of everything we do. I run to control development that overshadows and so overwhelms everything else we do in the city today. And I run to turn the city a deep green very fast and decisively, to do the things we need to do to answer the great challenge of our times to our life and lifestyles. We do need to protect our neighborhoods. We need to rebuild the community that is so severely frayed at the moment. And we do this by putting people first. But the central issue of this election ultimately is who you trust to lead this community forward and who you trust to be on the city council to make the decisions for the generations that are coming. That is why I ask for your vote on November 4.
Thank you. Kevin McKeon.
My name is Kevin McKeon, and I... Our most recent residents are... It's very clear the biggest issue to you who live here is the biggest issue to me. It's overdevelopment and the result in traffic. And my record on that is on my website at mckeon.net. One aspect of that I was surprised we didn't talk about, given the involvement of Streets Blog and Santa Monica Spoke, is complete streets and how we need to rethink how we use our streets for mobility. When I was elected in 98, I'd already been riding a bicycle in this town for 22 years. And I asked for a new bike map, and people said, "Why spend money on that?" Well, because I knew where we had to go. We had to reclaim our streets. The first thing I did was to put in new crosswalks all over town. That happened around the year 2000. We're now going back and revisiting, but I led on that issue. Then we did the bike plan. We did Mango, where I was able to broker the compromise that meant it didn't have to be delayed. We need to give people options. We don't need to get people out of their cars. We need to give people the choice on how they get around Santa Monica. And there are other choices, and I will pursue them.
Thank you. Zoe Munpaner.
Hello, my name is Zoe Munpaner. I'm running for city council because I want to increase the representation of diversity in terms of race, gender, and age. I think my generation is not supposed to inherit a legacy that didn't participate in creating. I think we have to create a legacy, and we have to have a younger voice because...